First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Because we're having a public hearing this evening, the citizen comment portion is reserved for items that are not subject to the public hearing. In other words, issues other than wireless communication facilities. So if any citizen would like to render comment, please step forward to the podium on our left, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Going once. All right, there being no citizen stepping forward to render comment, we've satisfied this element of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the May 17, 2016 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from May 17.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Hear any discussion? Any proposals for amendments? There being none, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, the motion carries. Minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, wireless communication facilities. Staff, do you have anything to add before we start the hearing process?
I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation that sort of summarizes the work to date. If you would like me to go through that, I am happy to do so.
Any objections? Please do.
Okay. Okay. So as you've stated, tonight is the public hearing on the wireless communication facilities amendments, preliminary amendments that have been developed to this point. This project, as you recall, was primarily a review of Chapter 1860 of the zoning code. That was a chapter developed in 2006, and there have been multiple problems of interpretation. And on top of that, the FCC has issued new rulings on minor modifications to communication facilities. So the amendments became a priority, and the project was assigned to the Planning Commission last January with the city council docket process. So you all began your review in November of 2015, and as part of the process, we looked at standards from our surrounding jurisdictions, Kirkland, Redmond, Bothell, Lake Forest Park and Shoreline, as well as codes that had been recommended to us, including Bellevue, Woodinville, Edmonds, King County, and actually a variety of jurisdictions from around the country. We notified all the wireless carriers of the process, and to date, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have participated. I think tonight we have representatives from other carriers as well. We also heard from the amateur ham radio operators. That was a couple meetings process. Again, tonight is the public hearing, and the Planning Commission is scheduled to make a recommendation to the city council. That potentially could happen on June 27, but it depends on the process of this evening. So I'm going to run now through the kinds of changes, summary of the changes that the Planning Commission has made. First of all, you identified types of facilities. As you recall, previously, they were considered minor or major communication facilities. Instead, now we're talking about antenna colocations, rooftop antennas, facade antennas, antennas on a utility or light pole, towers, satellite dishes, and amateur ham radio facilities. You then prioritize those facility types and their locations, with the most preferred choice being co-location on an existing conforming tower, and the least preferred choice being a new tower in the view zones, the city's view zones. You looked at exemptions, and this is where a significant change happened, in that you removed amateur ham radio facilities from the exempt list and developed standards for those facilities. You then set out review processes and heights for the other types of facilities to reinforce the preferred siting hierarchy, so that you would allow lower heights and more intensive review processes in single-family residential areas and view zones. Antennas on utility or light poles would be limited in height to 50 to 55 feet, again with lower heights in the view zones. And towers in non-residential zones would be limited to the building height for the zone, which ranges from 35 to 55 feet and can go up to 75 feet with additional property line setbacks. You looked at existing concealment element techniques, visual compatibility techniques. You strengthened some concepts. You acknowledged a desire to minimize view blockage to Lake Washington, to prohibit aluminum mesh satellite dishes, again encouraging stealth technology, require placement of related equipment underground if practicable, and prohibiting commercial signage on communication facilities. Regarding the new FCC standards for modifications, as you recall, those rules allow modifications to existing facilities, whether they are conforming or legally non-conforming, that don't substantially change the physical dimensions of the facility, and that is defined by the FCC regulation. Those now will be reviewed by the city as eligible communication facility modifications and would be approved, assuming they meet the criteria established by the FCC. You also established a major adjustment process, which would allow carriers to vary any wireless communication facility standard if they can meet the test of eliminating a significant gap in service and minimizing the impact of the proposed facility. In other words, there are no outright prohibitions in the chapter as drafted. The adjustment could be used not only to vary development standards, but also to cite an otherwise prohibited use. The major adjustment would be a Type 3 land use decision, which is a recommendation by the Development Services Director with a hearing examiner decision after a formal public hearing. And it's important to note that because there's conditional use permits and are a Type 2 land use decision, and so conditional use permits in other jurisdictions may in fact follow this process, but in Kirkland, that's an administrative process, a conditional use permit. You added a new code section addressing compliance with noise regulations. And then you looked at non-conformance. So if we have non-conforming facilities that do not meet the ECFM criteria, they would follow the same rules as non-conformances in the zoning code with three additional requirements. May not increase the height of the facility through the regular code provisions. There are additional review criteria, and compliance with the concealment element standards is required. A minor adjustment process, again, this would be a Type 2 process decision by the Development Services Director, would allow replacement of existing equipment on a new change-out utility or light pole if it's generally of the same dimensions as the existing equipment. So that was my overview. I also wanted to point out that there was a second memo that was provided to the Planning Commission that addressed changes in four additional code sections. They were changes that I had caught as we were doing the final amendments. And then you've received a number of communications this evening. I think they're all in front of you at this point, but so we've had a number of written comments submitted.
Thank you. Do we have a sign-in sheet for the public hearing? Can I see it? Thank you, Lori. So I'm going to call names from the sign-in sheet in the order they appear here. I'm willing to grant a little more latitude with regard to time, given that there's only four names on here, but I ask that you keep time in mind. I'm not going to set a number here, but at some point, I may say, if I think that you're going on about points that we've already heard, then I may say that it's time to yield the floor, but just bear that in mind. The first name on the list is Linda Atkins. Please step forward to the podium on our left, state your name and your address, and please render your comment.
I'm Linda Atkins. I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile. My address is 777-108th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue. I want to thank you for the attention that you've devoted this year to wireless siting issues. Although your time and hard work is much appreciated, T-Mobile respectfully must oppose adoption of this revision of the wireless ordinance. This draft is a step backward from Kenmore's existing regulations for wireless sites. It represents a real threat to the ability of wireless carriers to improve coverage in the future, and of equal or greater concern, it poses a significant threat to maintaining even the current level of wireless coverage in Kenmore. At a time when other jurisdictions have been streamlining their regulations in order to ensure that their communities have access to competitive wireless services for business, personal, and public safety communications, Kenmore appears headed in the opposite direction. We do not believe this is in the best interests of the citizens of Kenmore. The Planning Commission should defer action on this draft and hold additional study sessions with the wireless carrier community to correct the problems with the ordinance as recommended to you by CTIA, the wireless industry trade organization, who has written to you to comment on the draft. T-Mobile has numerous concerns with the current draft ordinance, all of which have been the subject of our previous comments to you. We have delivered a comment summarizing our concerns to you by email earlier today, and I refer that letter to you for the details of our concerns. At this time, I will just highlight a few of our major objections to the draft. First, the draft lowers the currently allowed heights for wireless facilities and significantly restricts the allowable zones for wireless sites. Your code currently allows heights up to 60 feet in residential zones and up to 100 feet in a number of non-residential zones. Under the current code, T-Mobile has six sites, ranging in height from two 60-foot utility pole sites to a 98-foot monopole, together with colocations on a 140-foot tall water tank and a 56-foot tall building rooftop. All of those sites, other than the water tank, likely will become non-conforming uses if the city passes this ordinance in its current form. Secondly, the draft restricts the situations where an existing site can be upgraded or replaced. So currently, any maintenance, reconstruction, repair, or replacement of a conforming or a non-conforming wireless site is exempt from land use review. In addition, as you know, federal law under Section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief Act allows existing sites to be upgraded, including de minimis height increases, and prohibits local jurisdictions from denying approval for such upgrades. The draft that's before you tonight for the hearing specifically eliminates the existing code exemption from land use review for reconstruction of non-conforming sites, and contains other restrictions on modifications to existing sites that are either unclear or potentially inconsistent with Section 6409. So together, the new height and location restrictions and the restrictions on reconstructing or modifying non-conforming sites really appear to be a severe move against existing sites and existing wireless coverage within the city. Although the draft ordinance contains an adjustment process that may provide some theoretical relief from siting restrictions in application, we believe that process and its decision criteria may set a difficult bar that will result in inferior wireless coverage for the reasons that we've detailed in our comment letter. Further, due to the low heights and locational restrictions in the draft, virtually any new site application, including applications that may have to be submitted just to keep current sites on air, will have to go through the major adjustment process, and in some cases, a conditional use permit process as well. These issues coupled with other specific issues with the decision criteria of the ordinance that we've outlined in our letter make it impossible for T-Mobile to support adoption of this particular draft. We urge you to reject this draft and revisit the basic policy choices that you have for balancing the technical imperatives of wireless infrastructure siting with the legitimate and traditional concerns of preserving community character. We believe that a better ordinance can be drafted, one that will preserve the character of Kenmore's neighborhoods while still providing the citizens of Kenmore with the high-quality wireless coverage and services that the 21st century demands. We urge you to take the time necessary to strike that balance with a revised ordinance, and we stand ready to collaborate with you to that end. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next name on the list, and I apologize for mispronouncing it, if in fact I do. Liz Carascaro.
Yes, Liz Carascaro.
Carascaro, thanks, Liz.
Yeah, I'm a Site Development Manager with T-Mobile here in Bothell, and I reside at 8212 Northeast 144th in Kirkland or Finn Hill, one street south of the city line. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. We're here because T-Mobile has concerns about the ordinance as drafted. We want to be able to provide, continue to provide high-quality communication services. It's what people expect. You know, half of households are cellphone households instead of landline, and there's increased demand for data for businesses and residences and people working from home. We want to be able to supply that demand. I live in the area. I take my walks in the area. I want to have great service. So, you know, from that perspective, as a person living in the area and a wireless site development person, want to share our main concerns. For us, typically, the way we cover a neighbor, an area like Kenmore that is a suburban residential area, is power pole siting, because you have existing infrastructure. It's utility infrastructure. It's a great way to avoid building new monopoles and just use what's there, extend the height. It's generally considered a win-win for communities and for wireless. There's usually an expedited process, and it's how we cover Bellevue and Kirkland. It's how we cover residential communities. So the concern with the way this ordinance is written with these 50 and 55-foot height caps, not even, you know, we look out and we see the hills and the trees, the mature tree canopy. Those heights won't even allow us to effectively cover the area with power poles. So it sort of eliminates what we would traditionally do to provide coverage to an area. Yes, there is the major adjustment process, but that's a very burdensome process for what would normally be a building permit and maybe an admin zoning review. So we would ask that you reconsider, you know, the unintended consequence is it makes it very hard to use power poles for facility siting. The other issue we have, if, the other issue kind of from a main perspective, is the ability to upgrade existing sites. We do some new site build, but that's really expensive. So we're continually upgrading sites to, you know, 2G, 3G, 4G, 5G, deliver higher speeds and more data capacity. And most jurisdictions, it's pretty straightforward. It's a building permit to be able to modify a site, especially with 6409. However, when we look at this ordinance, the way it's drafted, it doesn't even look like it complies with 6409. It looks very cumbersome to try to upgrade a facility. So that makes it hard to keep upgrading the sites to provide that higher and higher quality level of communication service. So there are a lot of issues and questions and things in this ordinance that would bear revisiting, but these are kind of the two main general areas. So I think with some revisiting here, it will lead to the ability to find better siting solutions. The concern is, the way the ordinance is drafted makes it just very hard to provide high-quality coverage in Kenmore. I think there are some other ordinances you could look at, like City of Bellevue, very streamlined to, you know, provide residential coverage. It's an ordinance that's been in effect for quite a while. It works well for the community. It works well for customers. So I think there are some ways to take care of visual concerns, but still provide opportunities for building communications infrastructure. So we ask that you hold on on this ordinance, revisit it. It's a good start, and it's going in the right direction of trying to protect the community, but with some changes, it can also provide an opportunity to build good infrastructure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. So the next name on the list, and I again apologize in advance. I'm wearing my low wattage.
Chuck Madwell.
Last name again, Chuck.
Madwell.
Madwell?
Yeah.
Thanks, Chuck. Please go ahead.
Chair Nugent, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chuck Madwell. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. My business address is 777-108th Avenue, Suite 2300, Bellevue, Washington. Verizon Wireless shares the concerns that you've heard tonight and that you're going to hear from other carriers, primarily AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, who have been working with the city on this ordinance for some time. We share their concerns. We also share the concerns of the CTIA, who submitted a letter on behalf of the trade association. These concerns are real. I think you've heard a lot of them already. I'd like to just highlight a few. One would be the severe restrictions on height and location of wireless communication facilities, including towers and, of concern, utility pole installations. They will cause many of Verizon Wireless's existing facilities that are now conforming to become non-conforming. That's a concern. Also of concern is the towers are prohibited in almost all zones, absent a major allowance, which is kind of like a variance, only with even more stringent requirements. And we're allowed, again, are subject to fairly severe height restrictions in the zone, which really have, which really don't relate to towers or wireless communication facilities, have more to do with structural height. But even rooftop and facade antennas are prohibited in many zones, primarily residential zones and view zones, absent a major allowance. And they're subject to a conditionally use permit process and criteria in these zones, including residential zones where they're really needed. These are the kinds of facilities that the ordinance should be, the city should be encouraging. The same is true for utility pole installations, including those in the right-of-way. These are also subject to a conditionally use permit process, and they're also subject to height limitations, severe height limitations. Again, these are the kinds of facilities and locations, when you're looking at the right-of-way, that the city should be encouraging. So we think that these and other provisions in the ordinance will make it unnecessarily difficult, if not impossible, to provide wireless services to the residents and businesses of Kenmore. I'd like to just focus on one area, and that is that a specific concern of Verizon Wireless is the effect that these provisions will have on small cell deployment. We understand that one of the purposes of the ordinance was to encourage small cell facilities in Kenmore, and we agree with that, but in fact, the ordinance will do the opposite. It will make such deployment unnecessarily difficult and inefficient. It will effectively prohibit small cells in many zones, residential and view zones primarily, without a major adjustment. It will require compliance with the conditionally use permit review process for small cell facilities, even on utility poles and in the right-of-way. And, you know, these kinds of regulations come at a time when other jurisdictions, most recently the City of Spokane, are creating streamlined permit review process for small cell deployment, because the cities are trying to encourage this. Kenmore should do the same, and they should make small cell facilities permitted use in all zones and exempt from many of the land use requirements in the ordinance. So Verizon Wireless respectfully urges the Planning Commission to defer action, to allow for additional study sessions, to develop an ordinance that meets the needs of Kenmore's residents and the needs of the wireless providers. Thank you.
All right, finally, Ken Lyons.
Thank you, Chair Nugent and Planning Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity to comment and for all your work on the ordinance over these past several months. We appreciate staff's work on this subject, certainly the city attorney and the Planning Commission have put a lot of time and thought into these issues. And we also appreciate the changes you've made in response to some of our concerns. We continue to be very concerned about the draft ordinance. We believe some of the policy choices reflected in the ordinances are based on inaccurate information, not intentionally so, but it is inaccurate nonetheless. We don't believe the ordinance provides realistic siting options as it relates to utility poles, rooftops, or even new towers. We believe it adopts categorically insufficient height limits to provide quality wireless service throughout the city. We believe it has conflicting requirements and standards that make siting unreasonably difficult, and we also believe it unreasonably contemplates the removal of many of the existing wireless infrastructure throughout the city, including all of AT&amp;T's facilities. And while we support the concept of an adjustment provision overall, we're very concerned that the minor adjustment does not really provide any sort of meaningful relief. You know, it's only five feet. And the major adjustments will be required for every site, including permitting existing sites, and the criteria are too complicated and narrow as it relates, we don't believe it conforms with the Ninth Circuit Court decisions. It's just too narrow in terms of how it's framed. I know that you've heard a lot of the concerns from my colleagues, and I agree with them. I just wanted to point you to some exhibits that I helped put together. I don't know if you all have copies of these, or if you'd like me to hand them out, if you have them, okay. So there are several exhibits here. I'd just like to walk through them quickly to just get you a feel for some of the perhaps challenges that we're seeing. First of all, if you would please turn your attention to Exhibit 1, which is resident, called Exhibit 1 Residential and Commercial Zones. The purpose of this exhibit is basically, it just shows that the math doesn't really add up as it relates to how utility pole, the height regulations are in effect. The draft allows 20 feet on a replacement utility pole, but then it also caps the total height at 50 feet for residential zones and 55 feet for commercial zones. And we believe there's two inaccurate assumptions that are behind this. One, there was an inaccurate assumption about how tall the existing utility poles generally are in the city of Kenmore. And also, two, there was an assumption that PSE would be willing to grant variances from their separation standards, and we believe that they have, I understand that they may have met with staff, they might be able to comment on this, but I understand that that is not the case. They are not willing to grant a variance from their seven-feet separation requirement on distribution poles. So this diagram clearly shows that 20 feet above existing utility pole height cannot be achieved because of the height caps of 50 and 55 feet. We recommend removing the height caps altogether and allowing enough height to build a facility without the need for a major adjustment. If I can direct you to Exhibit Number 2, this is just a similar one, but this is for view zones. In this case, the problem is actually even worse. In the last draft, staff recommended reducing the height cap of 45 feet to the building height limit in the view zones, and these limits are even lower. They're at 35 and 40 feet. And with a standard PSE pole height, these height limits effectively prohibit the use of utility poles as a siting option. You can actually see there that there isn't enough clearance to be able to actually put an antenna, and I would say that that also precludes the use of small cell, certainly in a place where you've mentioned that that was the type of technology option you'd like to see. So we would just assert that these height limits are just not reasonable. They don't work. They just don't work to be able to provide as a siting option for facilities. Exhibit 3, this diagram is meant to show what kind of relief the minor adjustment would provide in residential zones. As you can see, the relief isn't meaningful, since five feet above the 50-foot height limit would only allow one-half of a wireless facility to be built. AT&amp;T needs two sets of antennas if they're going to be flush mounted to an existing pole. We also require the flexibility to be able to put eight-foot-tall antennas, because they provide better coverage than the six-foot or four-foot antennas. Oftentimes, on these types of facilities, you see a combination of both, but generally speaking, that's the type of flexibility that's needed. And as you can see, the five feet just doesn't provide meaningful relief from the height requirements that are there. Exhibit 4, this height, this, oh, I'm sorry. On Exhibit 3, the minor adjustment, as you note on the five additional feet, it still wouldn't even get you up to the 20 feet that the code says that you're allowed on top of your utility pole. So even with a minor adjustment, you still don't reach the 20 feet that the code says that should be able to be achieved. On Exhibit 4, this diagram is similar to the last one, showing that a minor adjustment still isn't enough to avoid a major adjustment. This is for commercial zones. This is for commercial zones. We recommend that the minor adjustment be increased to be meaningful, or alternatively, the height caps be removed and that there's some additional height allowed to make it really, you can actually build a facility on its face without actually having to go through an adjustment process at all. On Exhibit 5, this is just something I wanted to point out. Rooftop facilities are considered under the code to be among the most preferred sighting options. And staff has said that these alternatives, as I understood staff, let's say, I should say, that they are generally available throughout the city. And we don't believe that that information is accurate. Many buildings, even in Kenmore's core commercial area, are one to two stories. Yes, there are some new ones that are taller than that. Across the street, there are certainly a few tall buildings, but most of even the areas in the core, commercial core area are one to two stories. And outside of commercial areas, the non-residential buildings are almost exclusively one to two stories. I just took some pictures and did a sampling, well, I Googled some, even though I live just down the road, just to provide some examples. And I just kind of drove around and tried to find just what are non-residential buildings in residential zones? What do they look like? And these are the pictures you see here. And there's one in each quadrant of the city, in the southeast, the southwest, the northwest, and northeast. As you can see, the 15 feet of additional height allowed would not provide meaningful coverage. There's just simply not enough height when you're going on top of a one-story or two-story building. And it isn't even enough to clear the tree line. So you can see, many of these buildings are surrounded by dense vegetation. Certainly, you would expect them being in a lower density area. And so, generally speaking, these rooftop sighting options, even though they're preferred, it's a bit of an empty preference because those facilities, those existing buildings don't, there's not enough of them, or they don't exist, to be able to shoulder the load of really where facilities would need to be located. Exhibit 6. I just wanted to provide you some pictures of what stealth technology looks like for, especially monopines. I don't believe that there is a reasonable policy rationale for banning new towers throughout the city, outside of view zones that we've talked about, but certainly for the rest of the city, especially when the code allows for new monopoles now. The pictures here show examples of stealth technology, so towers that look like trees, and how well-integrated into the neighborhoods they can be. And towers should be allowed in all non-view zones without the need of a major adjustment, particularly since Kenmore's average tree height is 80 to 110 feet. So in order for these facilities to work, they have to be able to reach that tree line. And I think that these pictures just demonstrate how they look in context with other trees that are really probably similar to what you would see. And you see, one picture is for a 75-foot pole, monopole, monopine I should say, and the other one's for a 120-foot monopine. And finally, Exhibit Number 7. These are just some pictures of existing utility pole sites in Kenmore. And under the proposed code, none of them could be built without a major adjustment. And I think the challenge we have is it doesn't make any sense to declare these sites as non-conforming uses when every site that is likely, every new site to be built would likely look exactly the same way. Those separation requirements aren't going to change. So you're declaring all these sites non-conforming, and then you're going to have to grant all these major adjustments to be able to allow them to be built. So these are just some pictures of four of them that are around. Anyway, we urge you to reconsider some of the proposed policies that we believe were based on inaccurate assumptions, and we urge you to create workable, realistic regulations. And we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone else who has not signed up to speak on the public hearing sign-in sheet that would like to speak tonight? No one? Okay. That closes the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments. Now it rests with the commission to deliberate based on this public input. I'd like to start by asking staff if they want to respond to any of these comments. I know we've heard some of these before. There are some new ones.
Good evening. So there are several sets of comments in front of you, both written and then the public testimony this evening. And if I were to start with information from the carriers, which, for example, I have just read the Verizon letter and the CTIA letter, but I will say that we've heard many of these same arguments previously, and probably there is one point that I think the T-Mobile representative raised that is, I think, I would recommend addressing, which is that there's still, I think, some confusion over when the ECFM process is used versus treatment of other facilities, non-conforming facilities or conforming facilities. And I think there's room for clarification of that. You'll recall, maybe at the last meeting, that we put, except for those things handled through the ECFM process. And I think we definitely could expand that language to some other sections to clarify that we are not in any way implying that the ECFM process would layer on to another process. They're distinct, and that the ECFM process would be one that would be automatically approved as long as it met the test, the FCC test.
Can you refresh my memory on what distinguishes the ECFM process and what it's for?
Right. The ECFM process is for modifications to either conforming or non-conforming existing facilities, and it allows additional height and additional width. It allows additional equipment cabinets. And then there are criteria for when you can do that. You can't, for example, do something that was not approved in the original permit, if there was an original permit. But it's a way, without any permit per se, the staff would review it to make sure it met the criteria, but there's no question that the modification would be approved if it met the ECFM criteria.
Why is it distinct?
It's distinct because you could have modifications outside of the ECFM process. For example, I think the ECFM allows an additional maybe 10 feet in height, but maybe the proposal is to increase the height by 15 feet. So it's outside the ECFM process. You can't use that process because it becomes a substantial change as defined by the FCC. So we had to have two different processes. The other thing that I wanted to clarify, and I tried to do that in the initial presentation, but in Kenmore, a conditionally used permit is an administrative permit. It is not a permit that requires a full public hearing in front of the hearing examiner, for example. And in terms of non-conformances, the city's non-conforming rules allow expansion or intensification of a non-conforming facility through a conditionally used permit. The draft regulations would not allow that modification to include a height increase, but if there were other types of modifications to expand or intensify a non-conformance, those could potentially be approved through a conditionally used permit process.
So an administrative review as opposed to the public hearing review under a conditionally used permit would just be based on the documents?
It's based on the documents, but there is an opportunity for public comment. It's written public comment.
Written public comment.
Correct.
Right. So it's all documented, and it's made by the Director of Development Services?
Correct.
Subject to appeal to a hearing examiner?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else want to ask questions? I know I've used up a lot of oxygen here. Go ahead.
Goodness. So can you, there was a couple of comments made from, I don't know if it was in the letters or comment, but how you feel that we're not disincentivizing small cell. So that was one. And then, okay, we talked about the ECFM, that was the other. And then we, I don't know whether we want to talk about the emailed comments from citizens.
Right. Right. I'm prepared to answer.
I want to get to that, but I did want to first exhaust the staff's response to the public hearing comments.
Oh, to the public hearing comments?
Right. And then we can get to some additional comments. If that's okay.
Well, I think they talked about the small cell and public comment.
Right. Right.
Right.
In terms of small cell, there was certainly, from staff's perspective, the goal was no disincentive to small cell development. One thing we added in to the regulations and was endorsed by the Planning Commission was the ability to do a single permit for multiple small cell installations rather than having to do a permit for every possible installation. The requirements, the process and height requirements, we could go through the zones and talk about that if that would be helpful. Certainly, there's still the conditionally used permit in the residential zones, but I think that my understanding of the height limits would not prohibit a small cell on, for example, a rooftop or a facade or a utility pole. Probably the only other comment I would make about the drawings that were provided from PSE, actually from AT&amp;T based on PSE information, I did meet with Puget Sound Energy. They requested a meeting and we talked about their facilities. And the new information from them is that actually, many of the poles, okay, so there are two types of poles. The transmission poles are the really tall ones, over 50 feet generally. And then the distribution poles are the shorter ones that range from 34 to 38 and a half feet in height. But what they did tell me was that many, if not most, of the poles in the city's residential zones are what are called three-phase poles, and they don't generally grant variances to those poles. So the seven-foot separation requirement would be in place in those areas. So I have a slide, I had the PSE letter earlier, and I prepared some information that we can walk through at some point when you're ready to talk about that. I would note that the information provided by AT&amp;T showed the 38 and a half-foot pole. Poles range from 34 to 38 and a half. This is just factual information. And I had, in that meeting with PSE, they had mentioned that AT&amp;T sometimes use four-foot poles, and Mr. Lyons tonight noted that they use four-foot, six-foot, eight-foot poles and, I'm sorry, antennas. Thank you. So I had inquired about what the antenna height typically would be, and in the letter from Merity Papst, you noted that she was saying that we really shouldn't be getting into the antenna height issue.
The letter from whom?
The AT&amp;T attorney.
Thought that was Ken.
Ken is the representative, Merity Papst is the attorney.
Okay. She sent a letter?
Right. It's from Bush Law Firm.
Right.
And...
Oh, I see.
It's on the second page at the bottom.
Okay.
I wasn't exactly asking for justification for eight-foot antennas. I was asking more, when is a six-foot antenna used versus an eight-foot?
So Ken was saying there are a lot of mistaken assumptions on which the ordinance is based about height. And, you know, I'm looking at some of his exhibits and they show, they show poles. I don't know if these are utility poles or just monopoles for cellular facilities. And they have these crosses. They are 35 and a half feet above grade. I thought the average height or the typical height was 35 feet. We're talking about, I do recall some seven-foot clearance requirements. I guess those are PSEs. I see two pads of cellular antenna here. I don't know if that's typical or if one pad is typical. Are we, is that correct to say that there are some mistaken assumptions about height?
I'm not sure they're mistaken assumptions. I think the information that's been provided is factual, which is, for example, if you look at Exhibit 1, we can walk of the AT&amp;T letter, we can walk through this. So the, in this case, the pole is shown at 38 and a half feet above grade. The poles can range from 34 to 38 and a half feet above grade. That information comes directly from PSE. The seven-foot clearance is appropriate for the three-phase distribution poles. They would not be likely to grant a variance. In other cases, if they're not three-phase distribution poles, it's possible that they would grant a variance. And I think the PSE representative is here, so he certainly can correct me if I'm misstating anything. The eight-foot antennas, again, Ken mentioned that four-foot, six-foot, and eight-foot antennas are used. I think that's a factual piece of information. And I don't think there's any question that AT&amp;T would desire to have two eight-foot antennas on the pole. So if they desire to have two eight-foot antennas, the height limits are too low.
Right. But if they have one, then they come within the minor adjustment height limit.
That would be correct.
We have a 50-foot height limit for residential with a five-foot minor adjustment. So if they have one antenna, they don't have to go through the major adjustment or the CUP.
They would go through the minor adjustment process, which is the same administrative kind of decision.
Which was the point. And then we've got 38 and a half, which is a high-end assumption on the height of the pole itself. So they may well come below the minor adjustment and within 50 feet anyway, in the least, in the most restrictive zone in the city, which is residential. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on this? Is there any, you know, Ken pointed out a series of mistaken assumptions. Are there any others that he pointed out that you want to respond to? No?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I do recall a number of comments about how we're out of step with all these surrounding jurisdictions, but I'm looking at some of our documentation from other jurisdictions, and I see utility facilities 15 feet above power lines in Kirkland, Redmond 15 feet above zone height, Lake Forest Park 12 feet, Bothell 15, Shoreline 15, we're at 20. I think we've gone over this, too. Yeah, we've tried, we'd adjusted a number of times these height limits to accommodate the comments we've been getting throughout this process. Did we miss something?
I think probably the only piece of it that you might be missing is that in some jurisdictions, the height is above, you know, it may be above the same, it may be 15 feet above the pole, but we are, as recommended, proposing a cap on the height. And that is, I don't think, done in some other places. And so it does limit, because if, for example, if PSE came in and they wanted to put up 60-foot poles and they wanted, then the carrier wanted to put a 15-foot extension on top of that for a wireless facility, that would be possible. What Kenmore is saying is, no, you can never have that facility, no matter how tall the utility pole is, and the city doesn't have height limits on utility poles at this point, you can never get above 50 feet. So that's a fine point that you should be aware of.
Right. Unless they go through a major adjustment.
Or a minor adjustment, depending on the circumstance.
Right.
Right.
And the point of that was, we don't know what the engineering capacity is or will be in the future for the need for these poles at these heights, and this gives the public a chance to step in and render comment on an unusually high or conspicuous pole. So it's not prohibited, it's just opening the door for more input from the public under those circumstances. I think that was the balance we were trying to strike throughout this process. You know, we're a view-sensitive community. We've got this lake, we're not highly economically developed, we'd like to be. This is one of our biggest assets, it's probably our biggest asset is this lake. The city was founded in 1998 and the name was given Kenmore by the lake, which people don't always use. But the point of it is, that's our identity. So before we just abandon that, we want to give citizens every chance to come in and speak to the value of preserving those views. That's one reason we give an extra protection to the view corridors in the cities and the view zones, and why we have these appeals processes. So at least there's input from all sides before those decisions are made. This isn't reckless. This was very deliberate. This process started in November. It's June 7th. Some of you I'm seeing for the first time. We've got these letters dated June 7th. Now, Ken, to his credit, has been here Now, Ken, to his credit, has been here virtually every meeting throughout this process. And I respect the input he's had and we've made adjustments based on it. Linda's been here a few times. I know she was sick one time and she's submitted letters, too. But they, they show up on the day of our decisions. It's very hard to integrate those into the process when they show up this late. And for somebody to come up and tell us, you know, you got to slow down. You haven't put enough time into this. With a letter that shows up the day of the hearing after it's been going on for six months is not very persuasive. So I'm not, I don't have a lot of sympathy for that. I'm just speaking for me. I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves. Now, having then responded to the public comment from staff and I've made my responses, I invite any of the other commissioners to make theirs or ask staff if they want to go through some of these other materials more deliberately. Vice Chair Orin Shaw.
Yeah, I had just a question about the, the, the nature of the major amendment process. I mean, we certainly heard the comments about how we're effectively prohibiting and such. Can you give me some idea of what the major amendment process would entail in terms of time and possibly cost to an applicant? I'm confused as to, it sounds like from their perspective, it's quite burdensome. What's your perspective on, on that process? Because that's obviously a key, as Doug mentioned, that's a key linchpin of what we're trying to do here.
So the major adjustment process would be a type III permit, which would be, again, a public hearing in front of the city's hearing examiner. And as with any permit, statutorily, we're supposed to get it done in 120 days from the time of a complete application. The materials, the criteria are basically twofold. And if, if you want to look at those specifically, we could turn to, it's page CF...
Yeah, I'm familiar with, I...
Oh, okay.
I know, I know what it entails.
Right.
In terms of the requirements. I'm just trying to get a sense of...
Right.
How burdensome is it?
I, I think it may be fairly burdensome. I don't know. I don't know how much it would cost. I do know that what they would be facing would be essentially the legal test that has been used through the courts to determine whether the city was, we don't want to be in a position where the city is effectively providing service or effectively preventing service.
Right.
So the notion that they have to prove that they have a significant gap in service and that they're minimizing impacts would be significant because it would be a high bar to show that. So I don't want to minimize how difficult it would be. It may be fairly difficult.
You wouldn't be able to attach, I don't know, a dollar figure to that?
No, I couldn't do that.
I think it's going to be case-specific.
Yeah.
Very fact-specific. Go ahead, Deb.
Remind us how that concept of a major adjustment came about. Wasn't that from industry?
It was.
Yeah.
It was a request that there, there was a concern that the city's regulations effectively prohibited as drafted provision of service in the community. And so the suggestion was, well, there should always be an outlet, an opportunity, if in fact, the carrier was going to be effectively prohibited, there should be an outlet for that. And that recommendation came from AT&amp;T and said, you should think about an adjustment process. So we looked at some adjustment processes and incorporated that.
Anybody else? Anybody want to comment on Jim Howard's submission to the commission on, it's the email. Jim sent two of them. Jim Howard's a former planning commissioner.
Oh.
He's a landscape architect. He served for eight or nine years on the commission. And he recommended increasing some of the design standards, architectural standards for monopoles.
Right.
Landscaping requirements. Did you have comment in response to those?
I did, if you would like that.
Yeah, please, share that.
Kila, could you turn on the screen? So Mr. Howard requested two changes. Those are the ones that are bulleted here. He requested that a type I landscape buffer, which is the most dense, it's primarily evergreens and evergreen shrubs, evergreen trees, be used in all cases, a minimum of 15 feet wide to screen the base of the tower or equipment. That's where the landscaping comes in. So the current amendments require 10 feet of type I landscaping in the residential golf course and park zones. And eight feet of type II landscaping, which is a filtered screen, it's not as many evergreens, in all other zones. So staff's recommendation is that the type II landscaping requirement in primarily commercial zones does not seem to be a problem. I think the nature of those zones is such that having a filtered screen versus a thick evergreen screen is not necessary. And we would not recommend a 15-foot landscape buffer because that would be wider than any other buffer in the regular landscaping chapter. However, there is one circumstance, and this is kind of reflected in the landscaping chapter, where a wider, more dense buffer is required when there's a new development adjacent to residential development. So staff, in response to Mr. Howard's comment, would support a 10-foot type I buffer for facilities in the other zones, other than residential, that are adjacent to residential development. So, and that would, as I said, parallel what goes on in the landscaping chapter outside of the communication facilities.
And then he had a recommendation for an architectural standard.
Right.
For concealing or...
Right. So that is the second bullet point here. He wanted to change the term "non-purpose-built towers" to "architectural towers" for greater visual interest. And he attached some photographs of the towers with the lasered metal panels or the lighted display panels. Again, we would not recommend this specific change. We did think that, this is the existing language right here, wherever possible stealth installations, either hidden within existing structures, church steeples or cupolas, or mounted in new structures designed to look like non-purpose-built towers, e.g., flagpoles, fire towers, lightstanders, trees, art. We felt that art was the appropriate term there, are required. So we get to the notion that you could disguise a tower through some artful means, which I think is what he was getting at.
Right. Did he want something more specific?
Well, the language he used was very specific. It had to do with, he wanted us to not use non-purpose-built towers. He wanted us to use architectural towers, but I'm not sure that that is necessarily helpful. If I were to read a code, I would say, what is an architectural tower? I don't know what that is.
Right, I thought it was a term of art.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, is that a term of art?
Not that I'm aware of.
But I thought Jim implied that it was. Did you get that sense, Deb?
I got that sense, but I don't, I mean, I don't have the background to know that.
Right.
Maybe it is for landscape architects.
Yeah. It's not a term of art that I know.
Yeah.
So I used the word "art."
Yeah, I thought your language was broader, I mean, more clear.
His language was architectural towers of perforated or laser-cut metal panels or translucent lighted panels.
Right, but that was by example, not...
Right.
By limiting language.
Right.
And then he said, "Architectural towers would be designed by an architect, which would result, should result, in a tower of greater visual interest."
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like it's likely to be true, but not necessarily.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say, but I did, I did think his examples were attractive.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, I think he leaves, he asked about that monopole right out here. It's a, it's probably grandfathered and there's probably not much the city could do about it. He didn't say that, but I suspect that's the case. But is there anything that could be done to make it more attractive?
I don't know. That would be a negotiation with the owner...
Right.
...of the tower. It would be non-conforming.
I don't know if the city could retroactively impose that. Do you?
Well, I mean, the city could certainly propose something, whether...
Mandate it.
Mandate, no. There's no way.
Okay.
If it is a term of art, I mean, could we just conclude that in the examples? I mean, just in the...
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, that, you know, just to close the loop.
Right. I'll, I'll see if I can determine whether it's a term of art. I can talk to Jim. Okay.
Any other, any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, the next few comments had to do with the Puget Sound Energy letter. I've kind of already reviewed that material, so I'm not sure we need to go over it, unless you want to.
Does anybody want to hear more about that? Are there any other questions of staff? Does anybody want to bring any of the commenters back up or direct questions to them? No? Dennis?
Are we anticipating...
Well, that's what I was going to get to. I wanted to exhaust everybody's opportunity to ask questions, get more information, points and counterpoints. We've done it many times throughout this process. We brought people back. We brought Ken and Linda back up to the podium. We've asked them questions. I'm opening the door for anybody to do that. But I think the biggest question tonight is whether we vote tonight on this recommendation, if we make any changes to the proposal that was before the public, based on this input, or we set another meeting for doing that so that there might be more consideration of that which has been submitted just today and tonight, and then have a vote. I think that's the, the bigger question. It's procedural. I certainly can't digest, you know, four new pieces of documentation that appeared Whether I'm willing to consider it, it's almost like missing a briefing deadline, whether a judge would consider it, a motion, the day of, I think is unlikely. Whether I would consider any of these circumstances, I'm not sure. But I'm willing to hear from others.
There's no new information in the, in the stuff that, I mean, I just, yeah, read it while they were talking, so, but, I mean, if you're feeling like, yeah, I mean, I could go either way. We also only have four people, which is the only discomfort that I actually have with voting.
Right.
Because it feels like we're missing people, but...
Well, Dennis has a proxy and I have a proxy, so...
Ah, okay.
We have six votes tonight.
Then we have six votes.
I think we can get a majority one way or the other. It's just I'm on the fence as to whether we decide tonight or we set the decision, ultimate decision...
Well, if we have, well, then I would, if we have the two proxies, that changes the metric for me.
Right.
I would, I would suggest voting, but that's just me. So now...
And that's why I'm polling people here.
Yeah.
Mark, what do you think?
I would like a little more time.
Okay.
Personally, I would like to digest this and give it a little more thought.
Okay. We have one for tonight, one for more time. Dennis, what do you think?
I would like more time.
Okay. So that's three for more time. And so I'm going to think more about this. What would be the schedule you guys have in mind, those who want more time?
As soon as possible. I've got enough time to think about this, yeah.
So here's what I'm thinking. We, we don't have a meeting later this month. Go ahead, Lori.
Correct. Your July 21st meeting was canceled because of city council needing the room. If you would want to schedule a special meeting, that is something that could be discussed. Your next regular meeting is July 5th.
And you had tentatively planned to submit our proposal, if it were approved tonight in some form, to the city council on June 29th?
June...
27th?
27th, correct.
Is there, is there...
Maybe next week.
Some reason that they need to see that on the 27th, or could we set that over to another night without creating problems for the council?
It, it doesn't create problems for the council because we said it was tentative, but we were just trying to, we, we wanted to set a tentative date on the council's agenda as to, if the commission made a decision tonight. If the commission doesn't make a recommendation tonight, we'll have to push the meeting back with the council. The council don't meet in August, so we'd have to try and then get on a July agenda. And that may mean then that once you've presented your recommendation, council action on the ordinance may not occur till September.
But is that a problem for other agenda items and the city's bigger scheduling issues or for the industry?
The, the only thing with the council agenda is it goes out 10 days in advance of their meeting. So you, you have to kind of look at then, whenever the planning commission meet, if they don't make a decision tonight, it would be, I don't think we could make the June 27th meeting, and if you didn't meet till July 5th, I, off the top of my head, I don't know if we could sort of make the logistics for a council meeting in late July.
Right. But it doesn't sound like there'd be some material disadvantage to waiting until September if that's when council action took place. I mean, we make our presentation in July and they may take, make, make their decision. We would present it to the council as we have in the past.
Correct.
With our comments, our presentation, your presentation, citizen comment would be, as at every council meeting, open to those who wanted to appear and, from the industry, for example. And then they would deliberate.
Council, council would deliberate and then, again, depending on your direction this evening or a future meeting, if you, once you've had time to digest these comments, if you then want to make any additional changes to the draft ordinance, we'd then have to assess whether the changes that would be proposed would be substantive changes. And if they were substantive changes, it may require a second public hearing.
Right. To the, I mean, what's the extent to which we want changes from tonight? There was some tweaking about the design standards and the landscaping. Are those substantive? Would, do you, the staff, think that those, the changes we've talked about to this point reach a substantive threshold, requiring a second public hearing?
Well, I think if you're discussing something after the public hearing that was raised in the public hearing, that's deliberations. I, I wouldn't see that, those landscaping changes as a, as a difference. Myself.
Vice Chair?
I'm sorry, could you clarify, Lori? So anything that was raised here tonight that we considered and made any changes would not be considered substantive?
I, I don't think, I don't think so. It would depend on where you were going with it. For example, if you totally reversed where you had been, you know, we're talking about five feet of landscaping in a type I versus a type II, there's probably a line. I might even have to ask the city attorney where the line is. I don't know.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the city attorney because she had been here for the last two or three meetings on this subject. Dawn, right?
Two, mm-hmm.
And once again, you know, she's not here. We have attorneys from the industry saying, this violates the Ninth Circuit position on this, it violates FCC, it is way too restrictive, this kind of thing. And she had responded to many of those concerns. I think they're the same ones.
I think they are. I think she certainly has reviewed all of these regulations.
So I think we're on firm footing legally on that.
I think so.
We talked about policy with her. I'm wondering if it's helpful for her to again appear if we hold over this decision-making, this decision to the next meeting, to have her appear and respond to any of this. And I open that to my colleagues. Is that your preference?
If that were to be the case, she is out of the office for the next, I think, two and a half weeks.
Right.
So that would affect the timing of your meeting, if you want to hold a special meeting.
You're talking about a special meeting?
Right.
If we were to hold one? We could do this at the July 5th meeting. Would that delay our, our next agenda item, which is affordable housing, in, bad in a difficult way, in a burdensome way?
Affordable housing was scheduled to be in front of you on the 19th of July.
July.
Right. So, no.
What was on the agenda for July 5th if we were going to decide this tonight?
We hadn't gotten there.
We would have to think if there was something we could, you know, bring forward from, from the housing strategy on, on July 5th. That was sort of the, the thought, but again, we hadn't kind of...
It sounds like we had some room in our schedule to do this, to set this over.
The, the council's schedule is really the, the driver for this. That was, we, again, the purpose was for us to try to get it in front of the council before their August recess, but...
Have they expressed that desire?
No.
That's, okay. Is there some impatience on their part?
I don't think so. The, the problem with the fall schedule is that this is a budget year, so their meetings are going to be very full. So it was more a staff administrative effort to get it in front of them before we got too far into budget season.
Right. So my sense is that we try to hold a special meeting. We could, for purposes of making this decision, we don't have two, three of our commissioners here, so it'll be a little bit of guesswork as to whether it's suitable for their schedules. for their schedules.
Well, I'm, I'm out of the country most of the rest of the.
Well, that's, that's where we should flesh out here. Is this feasible, or does it make sense? Could you be here for the July 5th meeting if we?
I'm not here on July 5th. I've gone the 20th through the 7th.
The, I'm sorry, the 20th?
20th through the 7th.
Dennis, what's your schedule like for a special meeting or deciding this on July 5th?
I can do either or both.
Okay.
I'm, I should be around too.
So I think what, we could have a quorum for either a special meeting or July 5th, and I'm trying to think, okay, if we don't present it to the council on June 29th, could we present it to them on July 11th?
Probably be the, no, we wouldn't be able to meet the packet, because the, the packet would have already been distributed for the council meeting on the 11th.
It would probably be the last, their last meeting in July. Because of the way the timing of their.
But that would still beat the deadline, right? The, the desire to have this issue addressed before the very busy council fall.
It would make it better.
It would complete your part of the process in July.
Their last meeting in July, which is July.
Whatever that lasts, fourth Monday, I don't have a calendar.
What, they had three meetings in July?
Tina, could you turn off the?
They don't, they don't meet the first Monday, they meet the second, third, and fourth.
First Monday's the fourth, the second would be the 11th, 18th.
I'll call up the.
25th.
Looks like council meeting is meeting the 11th, 18th, and 25th.
It'd be the 25th.
Right.
There's a couple of options.
Right, so even if we met on, without a special meeting, on July 5th, we could present something to the council
later that month.
On either the, you said the 11th doesn't work.
July 25th is the first one, if you meet on the 5th. Because the packet is due on July 8th, for the meeting on July 25th.
Okay. So if, when would be the latest we could do a special meeting and present it to them before July 25th, so the 18th or something, so they could have an extra session to take up any additional concerns?
On July 11th, the packet is due June 24th.
How about the 18th? The packet is due, for their meeting on June, no, I thought she said for July 11th, the packet is due.
The 18th is July 1st.
Right, so, we meet before July 1st. Can you, how long does it take to put the pa, put this into the packet? Between the time we meet, make a decision.
We had anticipated just four days.
Four days? So that pushes this to June 26th.
Could we propose some times to you, and, in that last week of June? Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, 26th is a Sunday, but. What I'm trying to get is, can we get this before the council on July 18th, and if so, I'd be inclined to set a special meeting for late June, the last week. It's a very busy week for me, too. I could.
Could we not do it next week? Is that just out of the question, or?
No, that's, that's possible. Good point. What I also want to do is, pardon me?
We are maybe busy on the 14th, you and I.
Of what?
Graduation.
Of June, okay.
Yes, next Tuesday.
But that's a full, we got a week to work with, there's a special session, so we could go on a non-Tuesday.
Right, yes.
Debbie? I see a pregnant look on your face.
I rearranged my face.
Don't blush.
I, I mean, I think, I think what we would really be looking for is, I understand you want some time to digest this, I think what we're looking for is, if you do that and we meet, and you then decide that based on your review, you're then going to direct staff to make some additional changes. And if those changes are substantive, then we have to recognize that we won't be able to meet that July presentation to council. So I think the question is, we, we're sort of waiting to see whether, based on the testimony you, and comments that you've received tonight, for the public hearing, you've, you want to open up any of the current draft and make any substantive change.
I agree.
And I think that's what you're saying, you want to have time to do, but then at the next meeting, that's when you'll be discussing whether you want to make those changes. So that's sort of the direction, and we, we, staff won't have any direction between now and when you want to have this special meeting about what to bring forward, other than you want to meet to review the materials that you've just received.
Yep, so, it seemed to be better, right? Next week? Fine.
Wednesday?
I could probably Wednesday.
Yep. Uh, but, uh, no, unless it's before. You know, lots going on, so.
I'll do Wednesday, Tuesday.
I may not, but here's what I'm getting at. And we could throw some dates around, and when do we need to fix a date? If you were to send out an email to everybody on the commission, saying, here's some, you know, can you do, and we could pick three dates tonight. Can we do this by email and fix a date?
We'd also have to provide public notice as well that there's a, a meeting.
But that's only one day. Two days?
I, I, off the, I can't remember off the top of my head what, what the
Yeah.
Notice requirements are for a special meeting.
Okay, but what I'm thinking is, if we can sort of budget the time, send out an email, find out when, what the other commissioners can do, you know, a Wednesday, a Thursday.
Pull each other a little bit before we leave.
Right, but that's it. We pull each other, we come up with a couple of dates, we send out an email, they respond by a certain point, like before the end of the week, so you have time to send out public notice. But what I also want to get at is, I don't want to consider, I mean, I, and it pains me to say this, because I've tried as a, as a chair, my time as a, throughout my time as a chair, to keep the door open for every public comment that could be material to our decision up to a reasonable point, the last reasonable point. And I want to close the door on that, because we keep getting comment, much of it is repetitive, after we can reasonably integrate it into our decision-making, as tonight. So I want, if, if there is, is there reason to allow additional comment after we've held this public hearing? We've got four documents that were submitted today. And is there an obligation on the commission's part to allow additional comment to come in, to be considered? I'm inclined to allow it up to a certain point, but I'm, I'm asking, is this the end of the, the hearing, both the written and the oral?
Well, you closed the public hearing, right?
Right, so the oral part's over. Does that mean additional documents can come in that we should consider?
They can always.
You cannot, yeah.
They can, but do we have an obligation to? That's what I'm getting at. First, I want to know what our obligation is, and then I want to know, and then I want to decide what we're willing to do.
We have to allow citizen comment at meetings, don't we?
We have to allow it in. How much you consider it is another.
That's my, that's all discretionary amongst, among ourselves. I'm wondering if the, if it's considered part of the public hearing, or.
If they speak during citizen comment, no, it is not part of the public hearing.
But we can consider it, of course, and we'll have citizen comment at the next meeting, right?
Right.
What I don't want is more letters and, I mean, and as I said, it pains me to say this, but I can't, we can't reasonably expect it to integrate that the day of a hearing or just shortly before it.
I, I think it's going to happen, so, I mean, I think.
Yeah, and I'm, what I'm trying to do is give notice here. For those inclined to send more letters and comments and challenges and points, I'm, what I'm trying to do is that, here's your deadline, and we're gonna stick to it. That's my point. If you want to send it afterward, feel free, but I'm not inclined to read it. Is there?
Well, we could have said that tonight as well.
Exactly.
Because they had eight months to do it.
Right.
So, I mean, that was my feeling, is.
Well, that's what I'm getting at here, and I don't want, and I'm one, I'm one vote, and I'm, that's why I'm opening that question to you, you guys.
Just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
We're looking, are you looking at the next meeting as the last time to get anything?
Yeah, we would make our decision at the next meeting.
That's, I think it's fair to say we can make a decision at the next meeting. What people choose to say or send us is up to them. If you want to set a deadline, that's reasonable, you know.
Well, it's up to the commission, it's not up to me. I'm saying, you know, I will speak for myself and say, it's, at some point, I'm not gonna read more stuff about this.
Yeah, I think we got pretty clear direction from these comments.
Well, and there becomes a point where it's, there's time, it's unreasonable to expect it to be included in the process.
So are you reopening the public hearing?
No, 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 no. I'm just trying to let people know, if you want to write something and submit it and have us consider it, you better do it by X date. Linda, do you want to comment?
I would like to make one comment.
Sure. Sure, I will.
I, I feel your pain i- in the sense that you've been working on this since November, and, and so I understand that you're potentially tired of the issue and would like to complete the process. The comment I would like to make is that this evening is a public hearing. The purpose of a public hearing is to receive public comment. And public comment comes in to bodies like this planning commission, either here at the podium orally, or it comes in in writing. And there is nothing inappropriate about a public comment letter coming into you on the day of the hearing, because the hearing is for the purpose of taking public comment. So the, the sense that we shouldn't submit letters on the day of, I, yeah, I think that's legitimate for one of your regular sessions, but for a public comment, a public hearing, I, I think it, it, it's not inappropriate for members of the public, which include, would include the industry and Mr. Hammond and anyone else who wants to comment, to, to send you comments.
I don't think we need a lecture on process.
I'm, guess I'm just trying to defend, you know, what, what we did, and, and just to say that the, the code does.
It doesn't help, it's not helping your cause.
Well, let her, let her finish.
Okay, okay, that's.
Go ahead and finish, Linda.
The, the code does allow for a second public hearing. That's all I was gonna say.
Thanks, Linda. And here's my point. That's all true, and as I said, you can send letters in before, during, after our decision. What I'm trying to convey is, I'm not gonna read them if they come in after a certain point. The fact that I'm even reading them tonight is a change of mind, because I wasn't inclined to. It's so late, and this has been going on so long. And we've been open to a lot of comments that at some point, it kind of disrespects us and this process to keep sending them and expect it to be included, but you are welcome to, if you like. I'm just telling you, I'm not gonna read them. Now, I'll read something that comes in this week, if it's dated at the end, by Friday or before. And you can send them afterward. But I'm not gonna read stuff that comes in after Friday, because I've kind of had enough. This isn't the first time this has happened. We get letters, and as I said, it pains me to say it, because I want to receive as much comment and input as possible, but at some point it disrespects us to say, here, this is, this is one more thing I want to throw in after I've had six months to do it, and today is the day you have to decide. Read it now, I expect a response. And I'm not gonna, but Friday, if you still want to throw something in, feel free. That's just for me. The commission hasn't made a decision as a body, I'm just giving my, my response to that. Debbie?
So I, I would say that, you know, from the, the folks that did provide comment, is that, that they have sort of done, at least, I think, you know, they provide illustrations to kind of demonstrate what their concerns were, so I think that information was helpful to kind of show those illustrations to demonstrate their con, you know, their written concerns, so, I mean, I think that was helpful for them to show that to you. Granted, it was today, but I, I do tend to agree that it is a public hearing, and so that's right.
Of course.
So I think the only question before the planning commission is that the, the issues that they've raised, I think, still fall into the height concerns, they're concerned about some of the process. Those seem to be the ones where they're still kind of expressing those concerns, and at this point, the planning commission planning commission's direction is reflected in the draft ordinance, so I think the, at the next meeting, it would be to, fair to say, is whether the planning commission want to make any substantive changes to the draft ordinance, which would be a, a change from the direction that you've given to date.
Right. And my hope was to read some of this and see if it changed my mind on it. And in fact, setting this special meeting, I think, is a concession to trying to open up this process and allow for still more input, so I'm not feeling a, a lot of shame about not having given this process a, a, more than reasonable, having gone the extra mile to get yet more input, even at the last minute, and still consider it. I'm just saying, it does have a limit. Deadlines do matter. But that's me. So, let's try and come up with a date for this special meeting next week, among the four of us.
I can let you know that you need to give notice at least five days beforehand, and that the room is available basically every day next week.
So, we can go as late as, well, depending on the day we pick, but we're gonna probably have to get decisions from other commissioners to see if we have a quorum for a certain date.
There's no council meeting in here?
There is on Monday. There is a council meeting on Monday.
So it isn't available on Monday, then? Okay.
Unless we held it at 6:00. Can we do that?
I think the room is taken at 6:00 by the council.
And we have to have this large room, because we're so small, I mean.
This is where kind of the recording's set up.
Oh, right, yeah, okay. So Monday's out.
You know what, Tuesday.
Monday.
Might work, because that ceremony's at 3:00.
Yeah, but it goes for many hours. It's, it's long, it's very long. But Wednesday, I mean, if we can all do.
I got a conflict at 7:00.
I'd be open to Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday?
Either one, either one is fine.
Thursday?
I could do Wednesday.
Thursday's good for you.
Yeah, I probably can't, but.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I, I might or might not be able to. It's unlikely. And we can't meet any earlier?
Than what?
Than 7:00?
No, I think we can consider an earlier time.
Oh, because if Thursday, if we could do earlier, I could do it.
Like?
I'd need to be out of here at 6:30, so I'd have to be quite a bit earlier, but. But, and then Wednesday, for sure, you can't?
Uh, I'd have to leave here. We'd have to meet early again on Wednesday, if I were to do it. 5:30? Assuming we'd meet for an hour. So Wednesday at 5:30, Thursday at 6:00?
At 5:30, same.
5:30 on Thursday?
Yeah, it'd be an hour both times, yeah.
Can we send that out to the rest of the council, commission, and then we would have five days before Wednesday? So we'd have to have a decision by, and is that five working days? Calendar days?
It doesn't specify.
We could text them.
Well, then we'd, we'd be able to send something out Friday if it's calendar days and still, we, we could send something out tomorrow and then get a decision by Friday.
Right.
As to when this would, and still satisfy the public notice.
And if the four of you are here, we know we have a quorum. Anyway, I know you want more members present, but.
Well, let's try that. That's what I would propose. Any objections?
So, Wednesday or Thursday at 5:30?
Right.
For the special meeting.
Right. All right. Anything else? All right, that satisfies that element of the agenda. Yeah, satisfies every item on the agenda. Is there any new business? No? Staff, you have any comments? Anything else we should know? No? There being no new business, I, yes, Dennis?
I just have one factual question. But it's now unclear to me exactly what a small cell is.
Let's ask.
Who, who are you asking?
Whoever has an answer.
Why don't you ask staff? To begin with. Do you guys, can you answer that?
So, small cells are, they're usually in a distributed system. They're much smaller in size. And you need, because they're smaller, you need more of them. I think in one of your packets, we had photographs of small cells, and I'm happy to send those out again, or you can just Google "small cell," and, I mean, a picture's worth, in this case, a million words.
I will check it that way, then. That's fine.
Ken?
Thank you, and thank you for the question. Small cells, I mean, they generally are smaller in terms, but typically you do have pole-mounted equipment. Most equipment for wire, for. For like other types of facilities would actually be on the ground. But there's actually a more pole-mounted equipment. And just because it's on a smaller antenna doesn't mean you're relieved from separation requirements. So the height of the pole, it's still a concern because even though the antenna might be smaller, you're still going to have to have more height in order to be able to get it. Then, of course, you're also going to have more stuff on the pole. And certainly, you're going to have a lot more poles. So... But generally speaking, they are less intrusive, but there are a lot more of them. And, you know, the same concerns about separation would still apply. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. They are generally mounted to utility poles in the public right-of-way. They're not generally mounted to buildings or... And they can also be located on light poles. You know, sometimes they're located on light poles in the public right-of-way. But generally speaking, the number of facilities that are being installed, it's impractical to really work with multiple different landlords to do an entire system and come up with a cohesive system. So generally, they're always almost exclusively in the public right-of-way.